Ang susunod na programa ay Rated PG. Patnubay at gabay ng magulang ay kailangan sa mga batang manonood.
So, I'm here to... ...say goodbye. Now, the following is the meeting as the temporary deciding officer. So... The April 26, 2022, regular session of the San Gugnian Palong Sur of Rosetta City is now going to order. Uh... They call on honorable Clau to lead this community and follow the invitation, then follow the team of national... Please rise.
Good afternoon, everyone. Our scriptural is applicable to state from the first letter of faith to the Christian in chapter 5 verses 5 to 10. In the same way, you, Lord, have to people must submit yourself to your elders. And all of you has called on the April of the Melody. Consider one another. But the scripture says, "God sees the proud but shows favor to the humble." Humble yourselves, then, and regards my hand, so that he will lift you up in his own good time. Lay all your worries with him, because he cares for you. Be alert, be on watch. Your enemy, the devil, roams around like a roaring lion, knocking for someone to the board. Be firm in your faith and resist him, because you know that other deliverers in all the works are going through the same kind, the same kind of sufferings. But after you have suffered for a little while, the God of all praise propels you to share his eternal glory in communion with Christ. Will himself perfect you and give you firmness, strength, and a sure foundation in the word of God. It is prayed, God, as we gather today, we ask that you would direct and govern all the decisions that are raised today in this regular session. God, we invite you to present in all our dealings and decisions, these guide our business practices, so that we can do, we can do that is honor your name. God, we pray for his stop in our discussion today, and we wish to say, thy will be done. We thank you for the way that you have guided us, and ask you would this should be continued to bless us, our family, our police, and all with whom we work, we have worked. God, we pray that you have would remain at the helm of our ship and the forefront of our endeavors for all endeavors. So you will be praised and glory in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Honorable Superior Superior Senior, this is the honorable Attorney General of the National Department of Energy and the Department of Water, the honorable Superior Chief of the National Department of Air, the honorable Justice of the National Department of Justice, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Public Safety, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Public Security, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Health, the honorable Detective of the Department of Health, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Agriculture, the Deputy Director of the National Department of Agriculture, the honorable Deputy Lieutenant of the National Department of Agriculture, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Agriculture, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Justice, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Public Security, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Public Safety, the honorable Attorney General of the Department of Food and Water, this is the Presiding Officer, Majority Leader of this state.
The Majority Leader, person? So, uh... Can I have your floor, any members or guests please first? Thank you, Superintendent, thank you, Madam, for asking the guest for our table to be here, regular session, and the honor of the founder and the president of the National Department of Commerce. Who we acknowledge is the presence of our meeting men. Thank you for coming. Uh... And F, in this long one must convey the people's time, so we will sit here. I can't see. So, we talk here. Thank you, Superintendent. The... The regular session is 18, April 2022. Signed by the numbers, it said, the honorable Arco Inanoria, based on 52. The honorable Arco Inanoria, who is on coffee, and what else? And this more of that now with coffee, well as the journal, the record session is 18, April 2022. Signed by all of them. Journal everything, signed by all numbers, except Arco Inanoria, the one Arco, and Hendrick, who is on the table is both present. Is there any objection demands on the motion of the the leader for the acceptance and approval for the journal, number 20, and it is, uh, April 18th, the meeting. Chief of the USman, the motion is approved. Okay, the report, okay, the report number 2204, that you have made my calling, the gentleman from the department. Uh... The gentleman from San Simeon is very much...
Thank you, Mr. President. Superintendent, the report number 2204, that's 676. Uh... Superintendent, they are difficulty for review and consideration, developing such matter. Letter A is nine applications for the new all units, and three applications for KPU unit. Letter B is one application for insurance of new units. Letter C, three applications for insurance of additional units. Letter D, and one application for insurance of new enterprise, and letter E is translation of smart units. Superintendent, and you committee chose that this article has given the old requirement necessarily for the attachment of the regulations. Therefore, they are qualified to bring a reasonable line within six five years in the city. Therefore, it is permitted that their applications be approved. And with regards to the classification of expired charts, there are two process numbers, or both of the new and franchisees, and they were not distributed in the letter. So, the group of the parties to declare the taken, the state of the state of the U inmates to their interest in which part their franchisees or generalization of again, this is the second one, also, for the recognition. The only difference in expression that their fellow interest does in quality of the event to qualify the cards. Superintendent, and we have the committee, and the committee for the answer, the report number 2204, that's 676. And the others, uh, who was seeking resolution number 083-2022, and the solution of proving of the issues for the new all change unit. She wants to provision a franchisee. She also, uh, uh, provision a franchisee, and she wants a reason for peace. And that's initially expired, that's as per the report number 2204, that's 676 of the committee on transportation. Passing it, of course, and I'm very ready. Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, there any objection, demands? Comments? On the report, on the point number 2204, that's 676? Including the possible issue of 093. If there are... There's none. There's no report or the other motion?
The committee here, we have the report, we have the report, and the number 2204, that's the question. The second kind of reading, that's for possible divisional number 093, that's 02.
Is there any objection, demands? Just be moved by the, uh, I think, for the third, number 2204, that's 076. 04. That way, he can tax city resolution number 093, that's 2022, passing from segment, segment. If there are no objection, it is the time of the class.
B, the report number 2204, that's 077, and the committee here, from the department.
And for the, uh, committee chair of the, uh... The gentle, the honorable gentleman from the future.
Thank you, Mr. President, and we go to you. Our chairman, the report number 2204, that's 04, that's 076. And this is the Presiding Officer, the committee on the protection and natural resources, that is going to apply and change adaptation and assessment of the action. The insurance referred to following such encounter. Application of Miss Kerman, who is superlative, currently called for seven and twelve of the new party, and the leader of the program by 2000, the KFC. Together with the Dutch proposal, proposal resolution number 30-2022, proposing no objection to application of Miss Kerman, who is superlative, for sending from the new party, the leader of the Yawan, number 9000, on the KFC, through the twenty fact, engineer working of five, numbers. Grand faculty and experience, the value to the center, where according to fact, engineer working of ours, has respectfully submitted honor, her documents, warrants, for her new auto property, the extraordinary resources in the financial area, and is truly with you, together with the nurseman, letter of the city and the main, our civil director, that last day were ready, very, very true. The company of environmental protection, natural resources, and probably applying change and application assessment reduction, tasks to build deeper the matter on how the documents are complete, as required below, with what is certified, that Miss Kerman, who is superlative, sending from the position as not very limited, and in the number table. That was buried to the table of the condition of the country's line to a unanimous decision, proposing no objection, application of Miss Kerman, who is superlative, this is proposed measure. Have truly considered, reviewed, the same other expectation on the supporting documents submitted, together with the letter of the city and the main, our city, and all dated by the government of the group. It was found out that the comments are completely required below, at the same time, while it still quiet, again, to the of the center of the position, to the consent that by twenty fact, engineer work of the various, and not very limited in the number table. Thus, was given census of the right, and the unanimous agreement of the commission, and passing the second, the final reading, the proposal resolution number 094-2022, and proposing no objection to application of Miss Kerman, who is superlative, over sending from the new party, the leader of the program by 2000, the KFC. Through the twenty fact, engineer work of the various, uh, package of the, of the in papers, of the package of the early service of the numbers, thus, of the essential, including the two. And please, Mr. President, I move to the invitation, and the option of the, the report number 2204, that's 077, and well as the proposed resolution number 094-2022, we come out of passing the second, the final reading.
Please, there any objection, demands? Comments? Comments on the report number, joint report number 2204, that's 077? Mr. President? Yes, I am.
I have one, if we... Uh, to the chairman of the Justice Department of Health, and to the committee on other groups. Uh... I think it was a letter coming from the farmers, uh, for, on the, but, in the range of the, uh, during the time, the, uh, I think that's not... I would like to ask for the moment, uh, if this, uh... Uh, if the moment, uh, on the both, uh, the vote count of the committee on ballot tapes, and how would you look on this, uh, subject matter, I mean, topic, of the... Uh... May I know from the committee on the environment in this area, uh, engineer, the rice field? Or rice field of the, some other farmers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I don't, uh, I have an idea. If we have this rice field so far, I will not want to in, in, uh, uh, access to it. I value it, uh, when, when, when it's, uh, uh, specifically. But I may put down one?
Superficial, I mean, uh...
But I may put down one?
Nothing, but I do.
Eighteen one? This is eighteen one? This is the same?
So, uh... The big question, the monitor, uh, the, the, for the... I want to know, can we have, of the, both, the committee on ballot tapes, and the, the, and the only going to have the report, number eighteen, with this, uh, joint, and only the report number 2204, that's 04, that's the...
Uh, Mr. President?
Yes, uh...
As far as April, um, the last staff, who is, um, position, uh, in Loteno? At the Loteno? Also, far, I'm open, I'm not far, and, uh, nine town, yeah, and, uh, farmers, and I was here.
So far, there are no, I mean, I'm not far.
Uh, maybe, yeah, 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 so far, I'm not far. I don't know, I'm not here, I'm not sure. It came by, it came by, 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 I don't know.
Yes, uh, I imagine, uh, uh...
I do, Mr. President, this is a survey of the Royal House, from, came on from the community of the border. Now, based on the committee report of the Jewish community, they refer, it's, it's, uh, no objections, I don't have doubts about it. Based on the previous agreement here, the subject, also, it was identified by the April 51. Now, I am my partners, the one of after nine. And I assume, now, the, my partners, my meet up, yeah? Now, as to the question of, uh, comment, uh, uh, my objection, committee on agriculture, as chairman. And the questions, many of the questions, and, uh, quality, I'm okay with, or quality, it should be one to read the law from the, uh, bridges. Which is, I assume, now, the, he is a top of the chair. Uh, I don't understand, I mean, that, uh, who has said, I forget. Now, as to the, my, 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 my friends, I remember, I'm in a, I'm in a, talking regarding, and talking material, I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm not quite signed, so I'm in a, I speak. Bring us forward, come on, uh, my love, sir. Is it what permitted away, over the way from the I speak? I would like to ask the, ah, committee chair, ah, Mr. President. And if, ah, na, ame siya, ako'y kasama, sihoro, ah... Um... Kini, eh, ah, iba na sa minato, he live and feed, na, basa sa kanya all the time. At the, consider, he consider also, ah, progress, na, niyan, makuha ng to mga ready sa papa. The only thing, or the most important thing, na, nakasolubis sa sa ngunit brothers. And so, na, na, yeah, isa sa kumain naman, kung ang kwan ya, it's only one, it's only only. Kumbian na na, na kay, ah, dilution, link is the silos. Na, mukulang magcheck na, and then, kumilid, ah, ato ang chairman sa community, ah, government. Or, na, na, sa, eh, wala na, or, eh, sa tawag na, ilang ating, eh, sa tawag na, eh, bigbo. So, talaga, ako's deciding, as, to, as the chairman of the community. Wala kuas, ah, the request is, ah, clean, ah, too. Wala kuwala, but, to continue, last March eight, we refer, ah, disaster. That is why, ah, I filed the resolution, which was with the refer to the committee on, ah, social services. And the same by the, ah, city, eh, ah, rescue action. To give, or, what is the plan, may hatan ako sa farmer. Except sa, eto, pondak, siyata, I prefer to have the financial assistance. Ah, based on the history, nakita, sa talunggihin, sa lokal talunggihin, most probably, mo visit in a eight, and every eight, okay, please. Now, so happy, na, this year, na, kamo, na, ah, talunggihin. Which, nakahatapit of, bargaining, ah, to ang, ah, the culture. Um... It has, it it talk, na, speaking, ah, it it of farmers, ang victima, sa disaster. That is why, ah, na, na, pasaros, rubion, sa to, ah, plan, who are the, the cities disaster, ah, sa social services. It is as, really, mula, ah, at it. So, para, ah, sihoro, Mr. President, ah, ipanmuster, o, sa, may nako. And then, on the part of the committee and post officials, na, at time, these, eh, ah... Introduce, na, na, sa to, ah, community, ah, sa to, ah, partners. And one of the provisions, can be, ah, pa-hatap, financial assistance, please, because of that. And it was only, um, ah, two, three minutes, dahil, napatayhan ng eyes, dari, ato, to, to, ma. As a, mukuha, ah, basic, as a, ah, in, ah, pahmas, ah, sa, sa, ah, sa, ah. But it was not, ah, continued, because of, ah, 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 so, building, ah, so, now. So, para, ah, my decision, ah, as to the, ah, ah, should, eh, comment, I have to, as long as, to this, ah, the, ah, time, that be, ah, ah.
Mr. President, ah, I comment, ah, this question of verdict of the order. Ah, I do, I would like to repeat again my question. For the comment, of the, he have the comment, ah, it's only for that, of course, you, oh, both the comment. And, there also, the chairman of the committee disaster, that is, only my question. Ah, there are house rules, it may, ah, to ang, eh, it's not, it's not, eh, 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 eh. Ah, anyway, my question is, kung, ah, by, the question, ah, that's only my question. Ah, second, Mr. President, ah, so, I'd like to ask our speciality, the title of the resolution. Ah, is it not necessary, at least, to put the... Renewal, eh, renewal money, but, however, on the issue, it's not no, eh, renewal, okay, ah, or is it necessary?
I think it is necessary, Mr. President, Officer, because, eh, eh, notes that the matter, being applied for is only a renewal, and not a new application.
Thank you, Mr. President, I hope for the amendment of the, the title of the, the... Resolution, to include the, the word renewal, not if the style, or, eh, eh, ah, the, ah, the, ah.
Second motion.
It has been moved.
Second motion.
And, ah, amendments of the, the word, I thought, eh... Change from, ah, what's, you know?
It's not the one, eh...
Include the word renewal. So... There's, we clear this objection. Ah, not for, ah, the chair.
Oh, ah, this is...
So, if you see? It has been moved. With no, eh, has been moved, by the mayor, for leader, eh, the, eh, can't, eh, remember, it could, as a, as a... Seven, seven, we have such, eh, the, eh, including, oh, two, three, under the subject, four, nine, four, that's twenty-three. Passing on second, final reading. Has come in yet? Is there any objection, comments? The motion is... See, for the word number two-two, that zero four, that zero seven-eight, and one, and the number four. The, eh, ten, ah, problem.
Thank you, Mr. President, Officer, and Madam Lieutenant, Lord Leader. Committee report number twenty-two, that zero four, that zero seven is, subject, San Priyang Kapataan, Walbud, for prior year twenty-twenty-two. Of barangay Limpus Alto, in the total amount of two hundred seventy-four thousand, seven hundred twenty-three. Bragay Sibukal, in the total amount of two hundred three thousand, one hundred thirty-seven. And Bragay Talagiro, in the total amount of seven hundred nine thousand, four hundred forty-nine. Mr. President, Officer, the three, San Priyang Kapataan, Walbud, for prior year twenty-twenty-two. Was reviewed by the committee and public, at its entirety. For one, two, six, or twenty, of the public, after, ah, ten, seven, forty-two. Subject to budgeting, accounting, and auditing laws, and regulations. And via the committee, Mr. President, Officer, this presentation recommends for the acceptance, adoption of committee report number twenty-two, that zero four, that zero seven-three. And passing on second, a prior reading, the proposed city resolution number zero nine-five, that's twenty-twenty-two. Entitled, "A Resolution Declaring San Priyang Kapataan, Walbud, for zero-one, twenty-twenty-two, barangay Limpus Alto, Sibukal, and Talagiro, All This City, Operative, and Entirety, Mr. President, Officer."
Is there any objection? One, eight, marks, on the committee report number, that's two, that's two, seven, three, two, 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 number, zero nine-five, that's twenty-two, twenty-one. Chair, here tonight, Madam Lieutenant, for... Under the committee, on the, on the chair, for giving, eh, the, ah, Walbud, for the, eh, barangay, Walbud, no textur. Let's move, ah, not, ah, the committee four, number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero-seven. And passing on second, final reading, eh, that's what we do, to the number, zero-nine-five, that's two-two. Is there any objection? Chair, here tonight, it has been moved by the, ah, committee for leader, the committee for number two-two, that's four, that's zero seven. And, including, eh, the... The proposed issue number is zero nine-five, that's twenty-two, passing on second, final reading. Now, passing on second, final reading, there's not a objection. The motion is... Mr. President, we are thanks of the, ah, speciality, the committee, allowing, to see, and so, ah, to, to, the... Amendment of the committee report, to the Honorable Member of the... Community Parliament, Honorable Attorney, if I may allow to do, allow to do. Right, ah, sir, sir. Our report number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero seven-nine, by Honorable Arthur, eh, Lord. The gentleman from, ah, lower, ah... Mr. President, I ask the member of... Do you see, na, na, na?
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee report number two-two, that's zero four, that's zero seven-nine. Eh... Ah, committee on personal development and welfare, which was referred... To, how the subject matter, letter dated eight three four, of twenty-twenty-two. From the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. Requesting this August Valley to pass a resolution, authorizing him to sign the memorandum of agreement, by and between the LGU. And the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, for the matter. Proposed establishment of academies, industrial, in-teams, program for the, all the job training internship. Of their students, particularly in the field of information and technology. With the thorough review and consultation of the members of the committee, with concerning agencies, resulting in positive, unforgettable conclusions, that there was a consensus of arriving, and... An analysis, they were, eh, something. On second, final reading, the proposed resolution. Number zero nine-six, of twenty-twenty-two, kind of authorizing, Honorable Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. To sign, a document of agreement, by and between the local government unit, Ouroqueta, and the University of... Science and Technology of Southern Philippines. For the establishment of academies, industrial, in-teams, program for the all the job training internship. Of these students, and selected offices in this LGU. Mr. President, this is, in behalf of the committee, on burden of the development and welfare. Would like to recommend, the acceptance of committee report number two-two, that's zero four, that's zero seven-nine. And passing on second, final reading, the proposed second resolution, number zero nine-six, twenty-twenty-two, as stated, in title, eh...
Is there any comment, remarks? Question on the committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero seven, two, seven-nine. And, it has proposed issue number zero nine-six, that's twenty-twenty-two. Of the committee on personal development and welfare. Chair, here tonight, Madam Lieutenant, for the... Thank you, Mr. President, on the preparation of the... Committee on Personal Development and Welfare. Pertaining to the MOA, between the local, and the, Ouroqueta, and the USPD. No objection, and to move, ah, that, ah, committee report number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero seven-nine. And to pass, on second, final reading, the proposed resolution number zero nine-six, that's two-zero, two-two, authorizing the National City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. To sign, a document of agreement, by and between the local, and Ouroqueta, the University of Science, and the Philippines, Southern Philippines. For establishment of Academy, Industry, in-teams, program for the all the job training, internship, and students. Inspired by, of the, this LGU, second, final reading. Is there any objection, on the motion of, eh, second option? On the committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero seven-nine. And, it has, proposed issue number zero nine-six, that's twenty-twenty-two. Chair, please, uh, so, motion, second. Committee report number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero eight zero, when I call in, Honorable Gentleman from Lowerland. And, the gentleman from Lowerland, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight, seven. The committee on personal development and welfare, which was referred to subject matter. Later dated, uh, eight three seven, of twenty-twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. Requesting this August Valley to pass, a resolution authorizing him to sign the memorandum of agreement. By and between the Ouroqueta, Agroindustrial School, and the LGU, relative to Oasis' request, to send... Their fines, standard for supervised industry journey, to the different offices of the local government. With a thorough review and consultation of the members of the committee, with concerning agencies, resulting... No positive, valuable, or, eh, was a consensus. Overriding, and analysis, favorable, recommendation, passing. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa, to sign, ah, MOA, by and between local government, unit, Ouroqueta. And Ouroqueta, Agroindustrial School, allowing these students, to all the supervised, and the state learning, in the selected offices of this LGU. Mr. President, in behalf of the committee on personal development and welfare, this presentation would like to recommend, the committee report to act, ah, na, acceptance, of the committee report number two-two, that's zero four. That's zero eight zero. Eh, passing on second, final reading, the proposed city resolution number zero ninety-seven, of twenty-twenty-two.
Is there any marks, comment, objection, on the committee report number, two-two, that's four, that's zero three, four? With the proposed issue number zero nine-seven, that's twenty-two. Chair, here tonight, any... Connecting with the meditation of the committee on personal development and welfare. Pertaining to the MOA, lying between the local government, and Ouroqueta, and the Agroindustrial School, or Hawa. Without textur, let's move, ah, that, ah, committee four, number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero eight zero. And... To pass, on second, final reading, the proposed issue number zero nine-seven, that's two-zero two-two. Authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, Eva Costa, to sign, and, ah, by, between the local government, and Ouroqueta. And Ouroqueta, Agroindustrial School, or Hawa. Allowing exchange, on the, of, for, by, and the, student, or, eh, 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 this LGU, second, final reading. Is there any objection? On the motion of, eh, the, for leader. A, the, number two-two, that's four, that's zero three, zero, passing, ah, for the acceptance, and, eh, together with the proposed issue number zero nine-seven, that's twenty-two, passing on second, final reading. Chair, here tonight, the motion is... Eh, committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight one, when I call in, the, ah, gentleman from Lowerland. And the, the gentleman from Lowerland.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the, ah, the, for leader. Committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight one. The committee on personal development and welfare, which was referred to all the subject matter. Later, dated, the print, letter of twenty-twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa, requesting this August Valley. To authorize him to sign the memorandum of agreement, relative to the national immersion, partnership. By and between the LGU, and the San East Asian Institute, Ouroqueta City Campus. With a thorough review and consultation of the members of the committee. With the concerned agencies, resulting in positive, and favorable, or, eh, was a consensus. Overriding, and analysis, favorable, recommendation, of authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa, to sign the memorandum of agreement. By and between the local government, unit, of Ouroqueta, and Southeast Asian Institute, Ouroqueta City Campus. Allowing senior high school students, under the technological, professional, and... Strand, and information, communication, technology to be accommodated, in the selected offices of this LGU, for work immersion. Mr. President, in behalf of the committee on personal development and welfare, this presentation would like to recommend, the acceptance, and adoption, of the committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight one. Eh, passing on second, and final reading, the proposed city resolution, number zero nine-eight, of twenty-twenty-two, entitled, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. To sign the memorandum of agreement, by and between the local government, unit, of Ouroqueta, and Southeast Asian Institute, Ouroqueta City Campus. Allowing senior high school students, under the technological, professional, strand, and information, communication. Technologies to be accommodated, in the selected offices of this LGU, for work immersion.
Is there any comment? Remarks? On committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero three, one. It's including the proposed, issue number... So, nine, that's twenty-two. Chair, here tonight, the, for you. Thank you, to the lighting, on the meditation, of the committee, personal development and welfare. Pertaining to the MOA, by and between the local government, and Ouroqueta, and Southeast Asian Institute, Ouroqueta City Campus, with no objection, and to move, ah, that, ah, committee four. Number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight one. And with that, the proposed issue. Number zero nine-eight, that's two-zero two-two, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa, to sign. With the memorandum of agreement, by and between the local government, and Ouroqueta, and Southeast Asian Institute, Ouroqueta City Campus, allowing senior high school. Students, under the, ah, great, ah, plan, with information, communication, and policy, to be accommodated, in the offices, this LGU, for work immersion, second, final reading. As we move, the, the, for leader. The committee report number, two-two, that's four, that's zero three, one. For acceptance, and, eh, including, the proposed issue number zero nine, that's twenty-twenty-two. Passing on second, and final reading. Mr. President, the motion, please. See, committee report, number two-two, that's two-four, that's zero eight two, when I call in, with the number from Lowerland. And, uh, the gentleman from...
Thank you, Mr. President, and the, ah, the, for leader. Committee report number two-two, that's four, that's zero eight two. The committee on personal development and welfare, which was referred to, ah... Subject matter, and later, dated, oh, eight, dated, eight three four, of twenty-twenty-two, from the Honorable City Mayor, David Merrick, Eva Costa. Requesting this August Valley to pass a resolution, authorizing him to sign, the memorandum of agreement, and, by and between the LGU, and the Southeast Asian Institute. Ouroqueta City Campus, for its students, to all the work immersion, in the city campus. With a thorough review and consultations of the members of the committee, with the concerned agencies, resulting to a positive... agencies, resulting to a positive and favorable conclusion, there was a consensus of arriving an anonymous favorable recommendation of authorizing the Honorable City Mayor of General Merek Emakosta to sign the memorandum of agreement by and between the local government unit of Roketa and Southeast Asian Institute of Roketa City Campus, allowing senior high school students under technical vocational strength in active fisheries and arts to be accommodated in the City Agricultural and Fisheries Office of this LGU for work immersion. Mr. Presiding, in behalf of the Committee on Personal Development and Welfare, as a member, would like to recommend the Committee Report number two two dash zero four dash zero two for acceptance and adoption, as well, the passing on second and final reading of the proposed city resolutions, number zero nine nine, twenty twenty two entitled, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, General Merek Emakosta to sign the memorandum of agreement by and between the local government unit of Roketa and Southeast Asian Institute of Roketa City Campus, allowing senior high school students under the technical vocational strength in active fisheries and arts to be accommodated in this City Agricultural and Fisheries Office of this LGU for work immersion.
Any comments, remarks, or any comment for number two two dash zero four dash thirty three, for acceptance and fashion, for the proposed resolution number zero nine nine, that's twenty twenty two. Chair Pearson, any further?
According to the recommendation of the recommendation of the Committee on Personal Development and Welfare, without exception, final move the last one on Committee Board, number two two dash zero four, dash zero eight two, and the pass on second and final reading of the proposed city resolution number zero nine nine dash two zero two.
As we move by the Committee for read, Committee report number two two dash zero four dash zero eight two, for acceptance, including the proposed city resolution number zero nine nine dash zero, uh, so that's zero nine nine dash twenty twenty two, passing on second and final reading, no objection. For motion, please.
Item one, business, uh, item two, for the day, proposed resolution, second and final reading, item two, item eight, the Honorable General Merek Emakosta, the Honorable General Merek Emakosta.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the Committee for read. The proposed city resolution number one zero zero dash twenty twenty two, entitled, resolution relating to the JODA approved adopted and adjusted plan for CY twenty twenty two and the local development investment program, uh, twenty fifty to twenty twenty two, Roketa City by cooperating, the proposed programs budget activities, with a total amount of five million pesos, as the United States CDC executed, resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty two, dated April twenty twenty two. Mr. President, the purpose of the resolution is an action taken in relation to the later dated, in relation to the request of the Honorable City Mayor of General Merek Emakosta, requesting for revision of the annual investment program for calendar year twenty twenty two and the local development investment plan, the LDI P or CYP DMP to twenty twenty two, for inclusion as a, as a new proposed project, uh, the completing of inner estate leading to Daminar Riverside Resort, amounting to five million pesos. Uh, Mr. President, the three whereas is, on the proposed city resolution, are part of committee sponsorship remarks, and attached to the proposed resolution, our resolution number one hundred and twenty dash twenty twenty two, is the later, uh, request by the local executive, dated January eleven, twenty twenty two, and April twenty 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 two, the second is a photo copy of the page forty and forty one of the annual investment program for CY twenty twenty two, and third is the city development council executive committee resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty two, dated April twenty 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 two. Mr. President, since the, uh, proposed resolution is presented for second and final reading, uh, the committee is willing to answer any queries or clarification of any Mr. President.
Uh, for, for any more questions, regarding the proposed city resolution, any final question, please.
I think, uh, I would recommend that we, for, for, in doing of declaration, to offer, if you know, the committee is open?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, for another?
Uh, just would like to, you like to, uh, because the, uh, proposed, uh, completing of inner estate, leading to Daminar Riverside Resort, so, um, as I mean, the minute Mr. President, I need, and we are, uh, one area, but we, we, we have, uh... Uh, for, uh, sure, verification, Mr. President, the purpose, uh, completing of inner estate leading to Daminar, uh, Riverside Resort is allocated in Malangai Upper Nakaman, the road leading from, from, uh, quarter of, uh, four of size of upper Nakaman, time is at Daminar, Monai, uh, proposed, uh, complete, Mr. President, yes, and understand.
Mr. President, section?
Langaysan, Langaysan.
Pasakan. Pasakan, so, Daminar.
If you're beside it, I'm satisfied with that, and more, and more, what's the, uh, interpretation, please? Chair Pearson, the third?
I think with no other, the, uh, party for any regulation, move both to, and likewise, uh, we're going for open record for any committee or any, uh, the expression is closed, the provision is closed, but I'd be, for you for amendments, any amendments, amendments, so then?
Chair Pearson, any further?
There's no other way for any committee amendment, I'll move for the, the one for the termination of, you for amendment, likewise, uh, with the recommendation of the committee here, committee in that, by the number twenty two, I'll move the pass on second and final reading of the proposed issue number one, one zero zero dash two zero two.
Any more questions, please? On motion of the Committee for read, the proposed city resolution number, gonna let us think, think, and ask you, uh, like, really? Chair Pearson, any more?
I tend to, with my view, in going, uh, the number four, and the number of issues.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the Committee for read, and the proposed city resolution number one hundred and one, that's twenty twenty two, entitled, the goal of endorsing for the advancement of budget management, DDM, for possible funding under the local government support plan, add the financial assistance to local government units, financial assistance to other LGUs, LG is F, uh, Talgo, of calendar year twenty twenty two, General Act of the Act, the proposed projects, completing of inner estate, leading to Daminar Riverside Resort, in the amount of five million pesos, and the completing of Tabo Resort to San Vicente Balo Road, in the amount of five million pesos. Uh, Mr. President, the, uh, the mentioned proposed city resolution number one hundred and one, that's twenty twenty, is an action taken, in relation, uh, to the letter request from the Honorable City Mayor of General Merek Emakosta, dated April six, twenty twenty two, uh, requesting, uh, this August Valley to pass a resolution endorsing the two proposed projects for funding from the DDM, as indicated in this letter request. Uh, in the proposed resolution, Mr. President, that we, uh, whereas is, uh, from, uh, are part of committee sponsorship remarks, as, and the, and the proposed resolution, there are attachments, Mr. President, first is the letter request from the local executive executive, dated April four, twenty twenty two, and the letter request from the local executive addressed to the DDM, dated February eight, twenty twenty two. Since, uh, the proposed resolution is presented for second and final reading, uh, the committee, Mr. President, is, uh, willing to answer any queries, asking.
For, you don't need to deciding, expect to wait for, to open the door for any interpretation? Here is all, uh, the, uh, okay?
I, Mr. President, I think, uh, for amendments, possible, uh, if I want, uh, completing of Tabo Resort, titled?
You need to, some, some, uh...
So, Tabo Resort, you need, uh, Tabo?
Tabo Resort.
Tabo Resort.
Tabo Resort.
Yes, the title, the title, Mr. President, is, yeah, completing of Tabo.
Tabo Resort, indeed.
Uh, really, really, can you, uh?
Tabo, no, 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 Tabo.
Tabo, Tabo.
A bit more, a bit more.
If you read the, uh... Uh, yes, Mr. President, uh, uh, is, uh, I read, I, 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 uh, state of public so, so, Tabo, uh, uh, I, 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 uh, collection, uh, so.
Question, uh? Question, uh?
Not it, Mr. President.
So, for that, any question, any interpretation, question, uh? Anyone? Any further?
According to the, uh, no interpretation, except for, maybe, uh, minor, uh, corrections, with the recommendation, the Committee, we can, as, by the, by the, as, by the, as, I'll move the pass on second and final reading, the proposed issue number one zero one dash zero two two, we...
Amendment. Mr. President, any comments, remarks, objection?
I tend to point one, I tend to point one, point C, when going, uh, the number four, the, the number four.
Thank you, Mr. President, and the Committee for read. Uh, everybody has a copy of the proposed city ordinance number ten, that's twenty twenty two, uh, entitled, an, an ordinance, amended, and X, of the special address number zero six, that's twenty twenty one, open, uh, plus practices of the natural budget number six, CY twenty twenty one, and the subsequently incorporated such amendment, in the JODA approved and adopted six device announcement program for CY twenty twenty one. Uh, Mr. President, uh, present, uh, for third and final reading, the proposed ordinance number ten, that's twenty twenty two, and the term as special, the one ago, and, in behalf of the Committee, I would pass on the third and final reading, Mr. President.
Any questions, Mr. President? Here. Uh, the Committee, uh, the last, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the proposed city ordinance number, zero, zero, that's twenty twenty two. An ordinance, and then, and X, of the, of the, ordinance number, zero six, that's twenty eight one, S P number six, CY twenty twenty one, the subsequently incorporated such amendment two, and, uh, six device, and, uh, problem, CY twenty twenty one, with no objection. Your motion is?
I tend to point for review, two point two point eight, for both the, number one, under the, uh, twenty two, but they're, uh, 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 expect for the, the item two point two, point eight, the Committee, uh, of the, of the, uh, of the, uh, item two point two, the first, uh, the, uh, the, uh, item two point three, that are dated, and, thirteen, twenty twenty two, uh, Mr. Card, my, uh, the, uh, of the, of the, uh, technology, especially national, depending technology, uh, obviously, charge, probably, affecting, uh, Vice Mayor and the City Campus, if the best, 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 in the case, the new, uh, that, uh, the person, the, uh, the, uh, 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 respect, very, very personal, the City Vice Mayor.
I tend to point here? You refer to, to, to?
I tend to point four, that are dated, actually, in twenty twenty two, from Mr. Royal TV Station, City, uh, 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 the Honorable City Mayor of General Merek Emakosta, requesting the August Valley, uh, ordinance, requesting the, uh, local, uh, finance, uh, here, uh, number, uh, number, uh, zero one, zero, that's two zero two two, dated twenty four March twenty twenty two, and the partner, number, zero zero one, that's two zero two two, dated seven March twenty twenty, division, uh, finance, on, uh, the, uh, guidance, uh, that to give, and for charges, uh, interest, no, that's, and that's for real property ownership in the form of the extension of the state, that's amnesty program, expect to, uh, the Committee, uh, of the, uh, of the, uh, question.
I tend to point four, review, for, 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 for,
I tend to point five, that are dated, uh, twenty twenty two, from the Honorable City Mayor of General Merek Emakosta, requesting the August Valley, pass the resolution, authorizing him to sign, uh, Monrato, uh, uh, by and between the LGU and the, uh, rise, uh, form, the, uh, city farm, uh, in order to, uh, buy, uh, supply, uh, uh, school, and pension requirements, for the LGU doing, uh, expect to, uh, I tend to point one, in the, uh, of the, uh, of the, uh, I tend to point six, everybody has copy, uh, for, I tend to point six, point ten, point P, everybody has copy, that's all, Mr. President.